Their name? Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Commissioner Lysick?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
I will now close the regular session of the board. We'll convene an executive session. Will the recorder please read the executive session script?
Certainly, an executive session of the board is called under O R S one nine two dot six six zero two H to consult with counsel concerning the light the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed and one nine two dot six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection.
President Fisher and good evening Commissioners. So tonight we're bringing forward a proposed supplemental budget for the 2325 biennium that will come to an end here shortly on June 30th. We'll be discussing the supplemental budget process, which you're somewhat familiar with. Why the adjustment is needed at this time and then what the actual proposed budget changes are affecting the general fund and the customer emergency assistance fund, which is Fund One and Fund Forty Three. The supplemental budget process, as I mentioned, this is not our first time doing this in this biennium. It does require the budget to be balanced, as any budget requirement is with Oregon budget law. What triggers a supplemental budget process as opposed to something similar that we did this year where we did an appropriation transfer is if a change in the fund's expenditures exceed 10% or a new appropriation category is created, then we're required to have a public hearing, which we're having now. And also there's a notification requirement that we need to publish the fact that we are considering a supplemental budget and what the potential changes are that are under consideration. So that was noticed in the Oregonian on May 14th, so we've met that obligation. The reason that we're proposing the change is that the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund, which supports temporary assistance for customers experiencing financial hardship. So this is separate from the Customer Assistance Program. It's a separate fund and it had an appropriated budget for the 2325 biennium of roughly $320,000. Now, the resources from that fund come from a few different sources. Primarily, we do a transfer from the general fund to the CEA fund, but it also has donations from board members, from staff, and from the general public as well, then any interest earnings from the fund balance that remain there. Our expenditures in that fund as of April 30th were $318,000, leaving the fund with approximately $1,000 remaining for the biennium. But our current assistance request levels have been averaging near $20,000 a month. So this was discussed at the May Work Session. And based on your guidance, what we're proposing is to go ahead and do a contingency transfer. So we'll reduce contingency appropriation by $60,000 and that will go into the Transfer Out Appropriation category in the general fund. That'll be received as a Transfer In in the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund and then we'll increase the materials and services appropriation by $60,000 in that fund. And we anticipate that'll get us covered for the remainder of the biennium and at which point we'll be proposing new appropriations for the 2527 biennium at the next budget meeting. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board. No questions based on the board's guidance from the May 6th, 2025 Work Session. Staff recommends the board adopt Resolution 1125, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget increasing materials and services appropriations in the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund for the 2325 biennium.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution 11-25.
I'll second.
Just as a procedural note, we do need to ask if there are any public comments because it is a public hearing. So, not seeing any in the room. We do have one online attendee. If you do wish to submit some public testimony, now's the time. I'll give you a few seconds to chime in. If not, we will continue with our meeting. Okay, not seeing any public comments at this time.
I already have a motion regarding Resolution 1125. All those, and it has been seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll have the reports by the CEO and management staff.
Well, good evening, President Fisher and Commissioners. Quick update from the management staff here. First, I want to highlight that our, what is typically called a consumer confidence report, our water quality report is out. This was presented to you as part of our Thursday memo. Important point, we've had no water quality violations in 2024. The report provides information about our water sources, water quality and distribution system testing. Also reports on our lead monitoring and happy to say that we did complete our lead service line monitoring and we have no known lead service lines. No PFOS detections and no lithium detection. So this is a great report, it's available online for our customers to review. It's that time of the year where we really step up our community engagement process. That typically happens as we turn from spring into summer. This weekend is going to start with the Cedar Mill Farmers Market. TVWD will visit the Cedar Hills Farmer Market Saturday, May 31st. We'll provide water and staff will be on hand to share ideas about the district, our Willam Water Supply System, and of course the upcoming water supply integration, which is an important topic for us. Additional community engagement events are scheduled throughout the summer and you've heard from Justin Dyke talking about that in the past. Last Thursday, I believe it was, Dave Crask and I had an opportunity to tour the water treatment plant or construction shore with the new WWSS water treatment plant with Mark Knudsen and Kevin Hanway, our retired CEO Knudsen and the retired water department director, Kevin Hanway. It was a great tour. Nikki Iverson, also from the City of Hillsborough, joined us. We were able to go into the treatment plant site, see all the administrative buildings and the treatment tours really got to go through the treatment plant. I think we spent probably about an hour onsite, walking it and getting a briefing from the folks that are going to be working out there. You might remember that Mark and Kevin were instrumental in developing the partnership between TVW and Hillsborough that led to the WWSS. And that's why we wanted to show them the treatment plant and both of them thoroughly enjoyed it and they really were impressed. I guess we can say we're in awe of the progress that our team has made in delivering this new infrastructure. So it was a great day for all of us. Let me give you an update on the Taylor's Ferry Grant. You might recall that TVWD was awarded a FEMA grant through the Oregon Emergency Management Office or the Office of Emergency Management. It was part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We received notification on May 13th from OEM that our Taylor's Ferry Grant was at risk of being canceled. Well, we've worked with OEM and have had meetings with them. We are engaged with others. We're jumping a little bit early here. The grant isn't necessarily at risk. In fact, I learned today in talking with Nick Augustus, who's managing that project and the grant itself, that OEM is confident that we will get the full amount of our grant over time. But it's unclear at this point. It is clear, though, that at least 4.3 million of the grant is obligated through March 31st, so that seems to be very clear. Any questions about that grant program before we go on? When we first got the email, it was pretty startling and as the facts have unwound, it seems that maybe it's less startling at this point. If there are no questions, Andrew Carleson, our Customer Service Director, will present tonight's Director's Report.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, President Fisher and Board of Commissioners. The department report tonight from the Customer Service Department is about the Customer Assistance Program. Some of this will be reviewed for you, but we also have some data to show you tonight on where things have been going, both on the emergency assistance and also for the Customer Assistance Program. So first, let's talk a little bit about the forms of customer assistance that TVWD provides. First, we have the Customer Assistance Program, which we started last November. This is an ongoing 20% income qualified bill discount. Qualification services are provided by our partner, Community Action of Washington County. And this was a recommendation to you, the board, by the TVWD's Rate Advisory Committee. We also have Customer Emergency Assistance. This is a one-time per year for a stated emergency. Qualification is also provided by Community Action and the current funding level is $344 per year maximum. We also have water loss, also known as leak adjustments. If an application is approved, a customer pays for TVWD's cost of the water, also known as the unit variable cost of water. And then finally, we have penalty forgiveness and you approved this year penalty forgiveness to waive fees one time per year per customer for shut-off and NSF, non-sufficient fee, non-sufficient fee fees. So this is for both the CAP and CEAP-approved customers. Getting back to the CAP, what we've been trying to accomplish here at TVWD is, one, improve the affordability of water needs for low-income customers in the community; two, reduce the number and risk of water shut-offs for low-income customers; three, provide a simple structure for the program; and four, reduce the burden on low-income customers and district by using a third-party entity, Community Action again, to qualify customer eligibility. So here are the features of the program. Again, this is for single-family residential customers who qualify for programs such as LIHEP, the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. TVWD helps customers get in touch with Community Action for qualification. Community Action then notifies TVWD that the customer's been approved. The bill, the current bill is provided, the 20% discount, and it's noted on the bill as cap discount. The discount starts with the entire current billing period. We don't prorate. The approval's for 24 months. The customer then must reapply. And then finally, an enrollment letter, email, and email are sent to the customer at the time of registration. The customer then gets a notification when they're two months before expiration. This is what it looks like on the water portion of the bill. Again, this is only for the water portion of the bill and the third line you'll see is cap discount. So let's look at some of the data here, both for CAP and for CEAP. This chart will show you the enrollment by month as well as the cumulative enrollment for a Customer Assistance Program. We're right now just a little under 900 customers after starting last November. We get an upload every week from Community Action. We're probably going to go over 900 next week. This is another way of looking at it, both for the enrollments and also for the total cap discounts that have been applied. That last line in the numbers is the cumulative application of discount. So seven months in, we're a little over $44,000. I would just take your question.
What do you attribute this increase to? Is it communication? The numbers have really gone up, which is fantastic, which was exactly what you were hoping to accomplish. What do you think initiated it and is making such a positive impact?
That's a good question. We do tell customers when they contact us. We also did outreach to people that had qualified for emergency assistance prior. We also had postcards that went out. So at this point, it's hard to say, but it's progress, but we're not satisfied yet. Moving on to Customer Emergency Assistance, this shows you by calendar year how much one-time assistance that TVWD has provided. About $89,000 in 2023, a little over $200,000 in 2024, and a little over $92,000 calendar year to date. And Justin mentioned we're averaging about $20,000 per year for emergency assistance. This will show you both the pledges, the customers that are receiving one-time emergency assistance as well as the total cumulative outlays. Pause there for a moment and see if you have any other questions.
I have a question. I see a lot of apartment complexes going in, or our house used to be. And it looks like there's lots of apartments, but there also looks like there's a large number of meters. So if an apartment is a comp- So if an apartment is in a complex, but the apartment is individually metered, where does that hit?
That's a good question. Pete, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, it's I can't think of an apartment complex built recently that was individually metered unless it was on the private side. So most of our commercial development, which these multifamily complexes would be, we would have a master meter. And then it could be a business decision for the landlord to to submeter that behind the master meter. So we would show that as a single account. If there's a specific example, I could give you a better answer. Like, okay, perfect.
I just, it's curious because, you know, it looks so odd. They have this huge carbon pump and then individual meter. But I'll check to see if there's a big meter. I'll get back to you.
Wonderful. So we talked about outreach just a minute moment ago. The next phase of our outreach will, we will be contacting customers who either are on or have been on payment arrangements for their water bill. And we expect to start that sometime in June. And then finally, any other questions you may have? On the right side of your screen is a snapshot from a postcard that went out. So this is what customers actually saw.
I have a question. I know your staff has been under a lot of stress. Well, since the pandemic or even but has has the these programs, if they rolled out, have they helped with the conversations, the difficult conversations that staff has to deal with every day with customers? Has there been susceptible change? And I know it's tough for a supervisor to say this, but do you think that this is helping with morale in in dealing with the customer assistance when they call in about bills?
That's a good question. This, this was a morale boost for staff, especially in the Customer Service and Billing Division, because they were able to offer something to the community that and they told me that they appreciate your support. It's it's just a very positive thing for them to be able to offer this to customers. So it's, it has been a morale boost. Thank you.
What I'm also getting at is if there are tweaks that need to be made in the policy that would answer or take care of a lot of problems that might be available, I think I'm going to speak for the rest of the board. I think we would be open to revisiting any of those policies as needed to to make them practical and more effective. As staff experiences it every day.
Thank you.
Andrew, I just, you know, also want to compliment your staff on this. You know, one of the side benefits for us as an organization is that not only are we helping our customers pay their water bills, but when they're going to Community Action, they're most likely getting signed up for other services they could be entitled to. And so that, to me, is like the added benefit of our, of having a program where we tell people about, we have this program. You're going to go there and you're going to hear about all these other programs you may be able to benefit from.
It's a real value add, definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Now we'll move into Commissioner Communications. The Commissioners will now report on recent meetings attended. We'll start with Commissioner Doan.
Oh, I see. I attended the work session at the beginning of the month and I attended today's meeting and Doan has an E on it.
Commissioner Duggan.
On the 17th of April, I attended the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Public Meetings Law webinars or required training. On the 23rd of April, I attended the Metro Impact Meeting where they are, their 2050 vision. And where they also discussed the TV Highway Local Preferred Option, a local preferred alternative, excuse me, for transit improvements and other other physical improvements to 12 Valley Highway as part of a larger grant initiative with ODOT. On the 30th of April, I attended the Budget Committee Workshop. On the 5th of May, I had my monthly meeting with Paul Matthews. On the 6th, I attended the Board Work Session. On the 12th of May, I attended the Washington County Elected Budget Messaging Meeting that was a Zoom and I got this nice little thank you note from Chair Catherine Harrington that appreciated my my attendance, which I, she was very grateful that I was there. I didn't really engage. She she appreciates my engagement, but my engagement was was showing up. There were a number of other questions for the county commission and for their their budget situation. They have a lot of difficult decisions to make going forward and I think it directly affects the cities and and other government agencies than than TVWD, but it was nice to hear what what the county is up to and they have a $2 billion budget. So and and they're coming up with shortfalls. About 300 million of that 2 billion was is a shortfall that they have to sort out. On the 14th of May, I attended the Talking Water Webinar where staff did an excellent job of giving instruction on how to properly maintain and and get your irrigation system ready for the summer heat and then tonight's meetings.
Commissioner Lysit.
On April 18th, I attended the JWC Quarterly Board Meeting. On the 30th, our Budget Committee, Budget Committee Workshop Number Two. I had a touch base with CEO Matthews on May 12th and then tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Sanders.
Okay, this is going to be very repetitive. On the 18th, did the Barney Joint Water Commission Budget Committee Meeting? On the 28th, did the WIF Budget Committee Meeting? On the 29th, did the Willamette River Water Coalition Budget Committee Meeting? So all the budgets are taken care of except for, well, those had to be taken care of so we could take care of ours. So on the 30th, we had our Budget Committee Meeting. Guess what time of year it is? And then on the 1st, the Agenda Planning Meeting with the President and their CEO. Our monthly work session on the 6th, one on one with Paul on the 12th and today's meeting.
On the 17th of April, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Policy Conference to hear from our regional partners about issues they're facing. On the 28th of April, I attended the State of the City Address in Tigard. On the 30th, I watched a webinar from the AWA about microplastics in our water supplies. On the 1st of May, I attended our Agenda Planning Meeting. On the 6th, I attended our Work Session. On the 13th of May, I attended my public trainings meeting, public meetings training meeting and got my little certificate from the state. On the 14th, I attended a briefing of the American Federation of Government Employees, which is, I believe they said, the largest union of federal, in the federal workforce to hear about their workforce issues right now. And some of them may be our constituents. On the 19th, I attended a telephone town hall to hear updates from Washington DC from Congresswoman Andrea Salinas. On the 20th, I attended our bi-monthly check in with the CEO. And then tonight's meeting on the 21st. And then I also had the wonderful pleasure of attending the AWA Pacific Northwest Section Conference in Boise and got to see Joel Carey become president.
Go to topics to be raised by Commissioners. Do we have any topics to be raised? None. We'll move to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment?
Not seeing any here in the room. If there's anybody that wishes to comment online, I'll give you a moment to unmute yourself. If not, we will continue with our meeting.
Move into the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Okay. Mr. President, I move to approve the April 16th and May 6th meeting minutes.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those oppose? The motion passes. We will now move on to our business agenda. We'll be hearing from our state lobby team and Paul Matthews.
Evening again. President Fisher, Commissioners, this was actually the fruit of our discussions. President Fisher asked that we get an update from our CFM team. So they are here tonight to provide that update. I'm just going to introduce them and Sam. I don't know if they're admitted to the meeting and unmuted, but
They are patiently waiting in the meeting. They are not muted.
Take over.
Okay.
And let me know if you want me to advance the slides, Waylon.
I appreciate that, Paul. And can you hear me okay, first of all?
Yes.
Okay. And I understand you can't see our mug shots right now, so us being on video would be fruitless. And maybe we'll just preserve your bandwidth and stay on our audio tonight, which is just fine. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Waylon Bukin. I'm joined tonight by Dale Penn, who's also online. Many of you also know Ryan Gleason from our team.
Waylon, can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Of course you can.
We're not getting the captions.
Oh, should I keep talking to see if they work or not? I'm getting captions on my end from you.
You are Commissioner Doan? Okay. Please proceed, Waylon.
Oh, okay. No problem. Let me know if we need to pause again. No trouble on my end. So you, many of you know Ryan and she sent her best, but she can't make it this evening. She's got some other legislative business. And I'll just be really frank that tonight, I think this update may just be a little less formal than we're used to and more of a discussion, mostly due just to the really fluid nature of this current legislative session. In fact, we just received updated news just like an hour ago relating to water transfer legislation and the negotiations happening there, which we'll get into. And just that example basically through this evening's update, partially out the window because we have all this new information to go on. So roll with us and we're just going to basically try to give you the lay of the land, an update. We did provide a few slides for your board packet with some general information about our CFM state team. So you could see our faces and contact info. Some of the session themes, timelines, and of course, the TVWD legislative priorities that we teed up for you back in January. So with all that said, I just wanted to make sure we had some material in your board packet, but I'm not going to be doing as much of a rigid play by play. And in fact, I'd rather just dive right into one of the key issues of this session, which was the water package. And this year, we were encouraged that we might be able to see some major investment in water like we did last year. But the 2025 session has been dominated by fiscal constraints, political gridlock. And the Water Caucus's proposed water package, which was essentially a collection of funding requests, policy reforms, groundwater management bills, drought resilience bills, infrastructure modernization, a whole bunch of different stuff. That package of bills is essentially stalled out. And that's because the latest revenue forecast, which we received last week on the 14th, projects at this time, a nearly $800 million shortfall in available funds for the next biennium, for the 2527 biennium. And so that's essentially caused legislative leadership to pull back from advancing their major funding packages, water included, and is essentially reprioritizing that towards education and housing and other items. We worked really closely with the TVWD team to analyze and prioritize and submit three projects for consideration this year. And that's, it was with the recognition that we were recently successful in 2024 with a $3 million allocation for the 189th Street Pump Station and Pipeline Project. And we knew that the chances of, you know, lightning striking twice in two sessions was somewhat slim. But we also thought it was worth a try anyway. So we went ahead and put together proposals and materials for three different projects that you have basically in your queue today. We submitted a request for the Rossander Tank and Pump Station Replacement, the Willamette Watershed Protection Plan and a concept for a state-supported ratepayer assistance program. And basically gave the legislature a good menu of options to choose from this year if those funds were there. But as we just discussed, the resources to support a meaningful water package this year are just likely going to be redirected to housing, education, wildfire response, and we're even hearing Governor Kotek discussing proposals to take a portion of the kicker. So I think it's fair to say that the landscape has shifted dramatically last week and this week on the budget. And that's in part what we're reacting to, having discussions with lawmakers, seeing what we can still pull off. But I think it's important right out the gate to just address the fact that resources are falling short. And the water package, which was very ambitious this year, is just unlikely to move forward at all. And so I want to pause there first to just see if anyone has any questions about that and to give Dale a chance to add anything I maybe missed on on the water package.
Yeah, Waylon, this is Carl. I was in the building the day the economic forecast came out. And you could just tell from everyone in that building that, oh, this is, this is bad news for everyone who was in there lobbying for something.
You're absolutely spot on. The tone in the building was it was not encouraging, right? And folks were mostly crestfallen across the board because it's just such a large drop. And the slide that Paul has up right now, I don't know if you can see it or not, but it's a good example that any one of the major session themes, any one of these could have absorbed hundreds of millions of dollars out of the state budget, a transportation package, a housing package, a water package, Medicaid adjustments, education funding, all of these have the scope to be absolute budget hogs and take up a lot of state resources. And so being $800 million down, that's, it's completely astute. President Fisher, that's exactly the tone of the building that day.
And President Fisher and and others, this is Dale Penn. I'm just introducing myself and Waylon's doing a great job of covering everything. The the one additional sobering fact that I would bring to the table here is that while we have seen close to $800 million of fewer resources than we expected three months ago, we don't yet know if this is the bottom. We don't know if this is the the end of financial challenges that the state is going to be facing. There is discussion about whether or not legislators will need to come back later in the year for a special session to balance budget holes due to additional federal uncertainty or reductions in certain programs like Medicaid or others. And so we are, we are kind of holding our breath along with everyone else in the government affairs space to see where the bottom is on the financial challenges the state's facing.
Yeah, well, well said. So I guess where I would sort of summarize the water package discussion is that we knew it was a bit of a long shot. We knew that a lot of stars would have to align just right for us to have another attempt at this budget request inside of the water space. But we also knew that being really proactive with this really ambitious Water Caucus, a collection of lawmakers that are very motivated on this topic, we knew that was wise. And so we got together early on, put together the materials for these projects and at least had them prepared and had our paperwork submitted early on so that if those things did align and the resources were there, we were well positioned. So it's something I would still do again, even if we had to So it's something I would still do again, even if, uh, we had to go through this process again because it's a good way to align ourselves for future funding. And on that infrastructure space. So this is some more detail on the water package, but I, I wanna pivot a little bit to. Another major bill of interest, and that's been a bit of an elephant in the room this year. And it's the water transfer bills. So Senate Bill eleven fifty-three. Is a water transfer legislation introduced by the governor's office. And it would significantly overhaul how water rights are transferred, modified, protected. The legislation has really broad implications to municipal utilities, ag users, irrigators. Um, and then environmental stakeholders are extremely motivated and passionate about this issue as well. It's largely seen as really paradigm shifting, especially in the context of all these other water package bills that were under consideration. It's the sheer scope and size and just the lack of consensus on this, especially around third-party impacts in rights, um, in-stream rights. The transparency under which you do some of these transfers, it's just really added to a big logjam. And as it stands, you know, nothing in the water space is likely to move until eleven fifty-three and these water transfer bills are resolved. With that said, Mark Landauer from the Special Districts Association just gave us all news about, um, an hour ago. Hour and a half ago now, I guess, that the governor's office has reached a negotiation agreement with the stakeholders. And have arrived at a full municipal exemption to this bill. Full in the sense that they would make none of one, sections one through seven apply to municipalities or special districts like TVWD. So at this time, we're carved out of the bill. Um, I'll be totally frank that our approach this session was to oppose this bill. First, and then look for a carve-out second as a, as a matter of last resort. And that's been, um, through the guidance and discussion with the TVWD team, our own team and sort of the reading of the tea leaves inside the legislature. That's, that's how we approached this one. Um, the political forces that they are and that have been at work and in some cases out of our control. Have really led this negotiating table to a space where they're going to try to take what is probably the path of least resistance. Carve out municipalities and municipal water providers and really make this water transfer legislation more about agriculture. And so, um, not necessarily the, the first result we were going for. But due to a lot of hard work and a lot of communication and a lot of arm twisting for different members of both chambers. Folks came to their senses and basically said, we can't do this in the amount of time we have left. And also, um, loop in and, and make this apply to municipalities. So if eleven fifty-three gets all the way across the finish line, it will come as of about an hour ago with a full municipal carve-out. And not apply to TVWD. So again, I wanna pause there because it's big news and these are bills that we've been tracking all session long and have been taking up quite a bit of bandwidth.
This is Jim Doan. Since the governor has already indicated that she's going to go after the kicker. For forest fires, is there any indication she's going to, to attack the kicker? For other urgent things like childcare or water? Or is this a, a one-shot deal?
Commissioner, that's a fantastic question and everything I've heard about the kicker. I'll admit has been hearsay. I've mostly heard that secondhand and didn't get to read a lot of those articles myself. But it looks like it's mostly geared towards wildfire response. Uh, it's a highly controversial issue. It'd be very surprising if she could pull that off. And usually when it's this multifaceted and this controversial, you need buy-in from a bunch of your colleagues. Or, or at least the legislature, if they're gonna do that. And so you probably wanna satisfy multiple different policy areas. But I think at this point, I'm totally editorializing and guessing at what her intent might be behind this. Opening up the kicker is Pandora's box, so who knows what could happen from here. Uh, but I, I think what you're putting out there is exactly what many other advocates are gonna be pushing for the minute. There's any indication that the kicker is in play.
Uh, and Commissioner, I, I would just add that in order to change the kicker, I believe that there's only a couple avenues available. I think you, um, potentially need to do a constitutional amendment. And barring that, you may need a super majority vote in the legislature to make change, to modify the kicker. So it's two-thirds super majority vote. This is modifying the kicker. Would be incredibly challenging politically, uh, and, and I think it speaks to the governor's interest. To address wildfire. Funding challenges that she'd even suggest something, knowing the political hit that she would potentially take having that discussion. There was a recent conversation in the building around a bill seeking to find money to help. The state deal with the extreme cost of wildfire, several hundred million dollars per year that's required to deal with it. And legislators are trying to come up with all sorts of different funding options to accomplish that. And they have not arrived at a consensus solution at all yet.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions as it relates to the water transfer process or what the next steps might look like on, on that bill? Okay, great. I'll, I'll just say as a last little bit of commentary on that one that. I guess I'm relieved that it's out of the status of just being an impasse because for the last several months, it's really. Been looming over the rest of the water policy that we've been trying to work on and. As many of you know, that you're experts in this subject matter compared to me, that it's very hard to get, um, you know, two dozen bills through the queue that affect water policy. When you're doing something paradigm shifting like water rights transfers, right, or affecting water law or water rights. Um, and so we saw a lot of that stuff early on. Most of it's fallen by the wayside or been sent to places like rules or ways and means to await funding. With all this latest news on funding, um, and with the water rights negotiations being resolved. That's timely. That's a good critical juncture for that to occur, but what's gonna come out the other end in addition to these water rights bills? Not super clear. Uh, it's really unclear what's left in the water package that can get through on its own two legs. There are a couple things, um, one being like twenty-eight oh three is a increase in Water Resources Department transaction fees. Like water rights transfers, um, and I think twenty-eight oh eight was another one that applied to wells. And those types of fee increases that might make the agency a little more self-sustaining. Uh, I could see the legislature having more appetite for those than something like place-based water planning. They just had blank placeholders in the bill. And they were just waiting for money to plug into that bill and that's what was gonna, was gonna go out the other end. So I think the universe of bills has been dramatically narrowed in the water space. But we also have a few other bills of note if folks are interested. To chat about some of those too, or if, if anyone on the board has particular questions about specific bills moving through and we've been tracking it, we're happy to try to address those as well.
We're seeing head shakes now, so please carry on, Waylon.
Okay, well, I, I'm in the unenviable position of being in the way of probably some of your dinners. Um, and so I think I, I'm happy to, in the interest of brevity, um, leave it there unless there are specific questions about other bills. For instance, I heard that there might be, um, questions about firearm legislation, so I took some notes on that if folks are interested. But otherwise, I can probably leave a lot of this on the chopping block because. Much of the time I was gonna take from you tonight was to talk about water package components that are no longer viable, so.
So Waylon, I, I did bring up the issue on the firearms, uh, because there is a bill, uh, and Waylon, please. I think it's a Senate bill that would allow the district, if it passes, signed by the governor. To, uh, regulate bringing firearms into a public building. Right now, state law prohibits us from, uh, from keeping people concealed weapons permits or licenses, whatever they're called, from bringing those. On our property. Can you talk to that at all? Because I think we did have visitors to our, to our boardroom that came armed and I think the board had an interest in. In, um, increasing public safety by prohibiting that.
And that's a completely fair question. I think anytime you're in a public space or conducting a public meeting and then that. That occurs, you know, questions are gonna naturally arise of like, hey, what's allowed here on these premises? What's not allowed? And there is gun legislation, firearm legislation in the queue right now on this point. Senate Bill two forty-three. Would apply to public buildings and meetings and it, it's a pretty high-profile controversial bill right now. And it would do exactly as Paul just said. It prohibit the possession of firearms in public buildings, including those that are local government offices or public meetings. Even by those with concealed handguns or have the concealed carry licensure. And it's generally seen as part of a broad democratic push right now to just reduce the presence of firearms in places they consider. Sensitive government spaces. Um, there's been, you know, escalating tensions at public meetings in certain places of the state. And so this has just been a topic of interest. Specifically, the bill would ban firearms from any building, uh, owned or leased by a public body where official business is conducted. It applies to special districts like TVWD, not just cities, counties or state offices. There are some limited exemptions for law enforcement and some security staff if you have those, you know, on staff. And then it would impose criminal penalties for violating it, um, beyond simple trespass essentially, so put some teeth on it. And where it stands right now is it's in the Senate Judiciary Committee or it passed that committee, excuse me, on a party line vote. And it's on its way to the full vote in the Senate. And the path forward is pretty uncertain right now, just given the time constraints, the political tension. And it, the political tension being important because they're all trying to make deals and do horse trading right now. And it's, it's difficult to try to pass something really, really contentious like this late in the hour. But if it does pass, I think it's worth mentioning for this board, this group. That you may need to consider, your TBD, TBWD may need to consider things like facility signage. Your internal policies, your meeting protocols, if the bill moves forward or if it gets reintroduced next year. Those are pieces of that bill that you might need to react to if it passes. And I can't give you any kind of prediction on whether it'll pass or not. I, I'll be a little bit surprised if they can get this one through, but so far it's cleared some of its tough hurdles and it's basically waiting for a floor vote. Any questions or comments on this one? Okay. Well, I think that's everything I had unless any, anyone has questions. Nothing's off limits if you wanna stump us or we can always follow up in writing if you do stump us, so that's.
Well, I guess, uh, this is Commissioner Fisher, just one final question for, for you both. What's your prediction on Sinai Dai?
Ooh, good question. I love that question. Um, you'll find this one interesting, President Fisher, because we've been debating this one back and forth, Dale and I. They have their target Sinai Dai, of course, but then there's another layer here of political complications due to the previous walkouts, right? A lot of you might remember that there's a ballot measure passed that if you exceed ten unexcused absences, you're barred from seeking future office. Kinda ends your political career, at least in that, you know, where you were elected. But that doesn't mean they couldn't do, say, um, the House Republicans, for instance, could do nine, uh, unexcused absences. Walking back from Sinai Dai. So may, do we, do we then take nine days off the calendar if we're prudent? Because there's some political brinksmanship that could be at play. Um, so I think the, the hard and fast Sinai Dai date. You know, if you're a political, um, realist or if you're paranoid, you might automatically subtract those nine days. Because you think that's probably something they would use, um, as a political tool. Otherwise, it's really just a matter of logistics, getting the paperwork through the queue, getting the state budgets passed. Trying to fund as many of those bills sitting in ways and means as you can. All while doing the one thing they're constitutionally obligated to do, which is to balance the state budget. So if they can hustle and get out of here, fantastic, but there's that nine days in play that, that complicate things a little bit.
President Fisher, I'm gonna answer the question very quickly. I think Friday, the twenty-seventh at like six PM. That's what I think. A few days before Sinai Dai, I don't think they're gonna wanna, uh, come in over the weekend to Sinai Dai on a Sunday. So I think they'll get done on Friday. A great question.
I think that's, any, anything else from CFM? If not, thank you for joining us and we'll move on with the rest of our agenda.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Take care, everybody.